Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the February 22, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmitt, Administrator, would you please take the role?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council, Stephen Madcor; Clerk to the Board, Tony Marinick; Commissioner West is out of the office on military leave; roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board. Gary, what's the first item?
Thank you, Chair. You are now meeting as the Housing Authority Board of Directors of Clackamas County. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Good morning, Commissioner Leenstra.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. This is a public hearing. Item one: Receiving Public Comment on the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Plan and Move-to-Work Supplement. The anticipated grant value is $30 million. Funding is through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Rod Cook is the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services at Clackamas County, and Tony Carter is the Executive Director of the Clackamas County Housing Authority. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. The Housing Authority of Clackamas County is a component unit within the Housing and Community Development Division of the Health, Housing and Human Services Department. It's holding a public hearing to solicit feedback from the Board and the community regarding the Housing Authority's 2024 annual plan and included moving to work supplement. The comments received will be reviewed and considered by staff as well as recorded in the plan in Attachment O. A final draft will then be brought back to the Board for final approval prior to submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. No formal vote is required of the Board at this time, and I'll hand it over to Tony to give you a few specifics.
Good morning, Commissioners. The public hearing is a federal requirement to make sure that all comments are heard by our Board and by our residents of Clackamas County. We've gone over this annual plan with our resident advisory board, which are the participants we serve right now, and they have reviewed and approved it, and their comments are in Attachment J. An overall summary of the biggest changes to the annual plan is on Page three after your staff report, so I won't go through each of those policy changes that we are making. But when you're looking at the annual plan, we mostly are focusing only on federal policy changes, but we do notify HUD of other resources and policies we are dealing with with a general sense. Our federal programs are development or redevelopment of public housing, which is covered on Page three of 15; federal rental assistance, which is in Attachment A; and public housing, which is part of Attachment B. I am pleased to report when the Housing Authority presents our overall strategies of all of our resources, including the metro funding, that this Board has led and approved, HUD overall seems pleased and impressed with our strategies to date. They think we are front runners in what we are doing. The development strategy has been aligned with Metro bond funds, and no changes are being addressed in the annual plan from what the Board has already approved. So today, most of the annual plan is just HOTMA, which is regulatory changes that came through from Congress; moving to work policy changes; and general policy changes we have decided to align all of our programs, like our regional long-term rent assistance program, with our federal programs. So the HOTMA changes will be effective January 1, 2025. That is a deadline date. We have to meet by regulation. The move to work changes we have asked for will be effective starting July 1 of '24. And then the other policy changes that we have come up with will be on a slow rollout, such as we decided to do triennial annials instead of doing an annual review of a person who is on fixed income social security. It doesn't make much sense. We can do those triannually and save workload, so we are doing that in the next year. That'll roll out over the next year as we go through each client's scheduled change. So all we are asking today is for public comments, if there are any, and we will continue to take public comments until March 15, 2024. And all comments coming in today will be added to our Attachment O in the plan, and a final version will be submitted for Board approval in late March or early April, and the Board-approved version will then be submitted to HUD no later than April 17. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do Commissioners have any qualifying questions? Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Rod Cook and Tony Carter. Are there any federal policy changes that will reduce HUD funding that may require an alternative funding source here in the county or the reduction of one of our current programs?
No, and in fact, we're looking at an increase in funding in the coming year.
I thought HUD was in a situation where they're going to see reduced funding coming out.
They renew us at the rate we got the prior year, and then they give us a COLA for inflation every year, and they're still projecting to do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, thank you for all that you guys do. It's always a pleasure to see both of you here. What I wanted to ask was to, and I may just have my staff contact your staff, to get a sense of all the HUD dollars, just on a kind of a white paper sheet list of what we're getting from HUD normally with these programs. And the reason I'm asking for that is that I'm chairing the committee that does most of the lobbying on the Hill and make sure that those funds remain intact, remain available to us. And this is not just for our county, it's for counties across the nation, but it would be very good for me to have that information on hand so I can explain to people that action at that level of government and being there and talking to those legislators at the federal level is essential for these programs in order to get those revenue streams. So would you guys mind doing that?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Provide that to all Commissioners, please.
Well, I mean, I'm not in a rush rush, but yeah, you know, I don't want to give you guys any more than you already have a big job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Commissioners? I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. If there's anyone in the room who would like to testify, please fill out a blue card and come forward. I don't see anyone in the room who wants to testify on this particular topic. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify on this?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there are any further questions or comments on this particular item. Anne Leenstra, are you okay?
Commissioner Leenstra, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm good on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Leenstra. Staff, please take any comments received today under consideration. The final plan will be submitted to the Board for approval at a future business meeting. Thank you for all your good work on this, and I like the term that you use. HUD said we were front runners in this area. Yee-haw. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Leenstra, for joining us today. Next is a public hearing. Item one: Adoption of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-010 in Annexation to Sunrise Water District. There is no fiscal impact, there are no county general funds involved. Hong Nguyen is Assistant County Counsel from the County Council's Office. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. As mentioned, I'm here on a proposal for your recommendation and approval to the annexation into Sunrise Water Authority of a piece of property that is in unincorporated Clackamas County in the former Damascus neighborhood. It is located on southeast Winston Road, and it's three acres valued at over $110,000. It's unimproved right now, but it is site to a future family home. As such, Sunrise Water provides portable water services, and the property owner would like to receive water services. And this time around, there is a water main that's about 10 feet away from the subject property, so it is quite efficient. We've reviewed the Clackamas County Comp Plan, the Metro Code, and state law, and find that this proposal is consistent with all those requirements. So for those reasons, we are recommending that this commission approves this proposed annexation.
Thank you, Hong, on this. Do Commissioners have any clarifying questions on this particular annexation? Seeing none, I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I see no one in the room who wants to testify on this. Matter of fact, I see no one in the room, just so folks will know. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-010.
Second it.
Commissioner Savis has moved we adopt the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-010, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Transportation and Development. Item one: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Wilsonville for the Stafford 65th Ellingson Road Roundabout Project. Agreement value is $1 million, funding through the City of Wilsonville. No county general funds are involved. Item two: Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Yoder Quarry LLC for purchase of aggregate rock products. Total contract value $225,000, over three years, funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three: Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Knife River Corporation Northwest for purchase of aggregate rock products. Total contract value $225,000, over three years, funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four: Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Eagle Creek Rock Products LLC for purchase of aggregate rock products. Total contract value $225,000, over three years, funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five: Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC for the Jennings Avenue, Oregon 99E to Oatfield Road Project. Total contract value is $5,253,884.75, funding through Federal Surface Transportation Program, County-Allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds, and County Road funds. No county general funds are involved. Finance. Item one: Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with North Saniam Paving Company for the Loop Road and Parking Lot F construction project for the replacement county courthouse. Total contract value $4,145,600, funding through budgeted county general funds, and is eligible for 50% reimbursement from the Oregon Courthouse Capital Construction and Improvement Fund. Health Housing Human Services. Item one: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon State University for program planning, development, and training courses. Agreement value is $31,500, 15 months, funding through the Oregon Health Authority, public health modernization funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two: Approval of Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Health and Human Services for senior services in Clackamas County. Agreement value is $285,387, for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Health and Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item three: Approval of Amendment Number One: Expanding the Scope and Increasing Funding of a Contract with Ant Farm for Extreme Weather Center Activities in Rural Areas of Clackamas County. Agreement value is $87,000, for five months. Contract value increased to $847,446.72, for seven months. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved.
Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Is there any Commissioner who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors.
This is the consent agenda for the Development Agency of Clackamas County. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item: Approval of Amendment Number One to a Disposition Agreement between Clackamas County Development Agency and AHP Acquisitions II LLC. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved.
Does any Director wish to remove any item off of this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Scholl has moved for the approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Director Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. We are at public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of Board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. I see no one in the room who would like to testify today, and there are no blue cards, correct, Tony?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Tony, is there anyone online who wishes to testify today?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share some great work of our county employees during my time. Today, I want to recognize our Transportation and Development staff and our Transportation Maintenance Division for the work that they did helping clean up the roads from the ice storm we had in January. A resident of Sandy area sent in a nice letter about our staff, and I'm paraphrasing it, but she wanted to, she wrote in to commend the Transportation Maintenance Division staff for their extraordinary cleanup effort after the ice storm in January. She wrote, and she lives near the Ten Eck Road in the Sandy area. She said, "The first mile of Ten Eck Road looked like a tornado had hit the area. There were fallen tree trunks and debris so large that it seemed like Coleman Road would never return to a clear, let alone tidy, condition. For days, the passage was just one lane wide due to all the debris. Yet by the end of January, all the rights of way were in fantastic shape after efforts by both Portland General Electric and Clackamas County. Not only was the roadway clear and clean, all the ditches were also free of all major debris. Aside from the absence of many stately trees, the street looked like it should." The person finished by saying, "Thank you from a grateful citizen. Please let your staff know how much their awesome effort is appreciated." So thank you to our Transportation Maintenance Division staff, led by Shane Abbott, the Operations Manager, and Dan Johnson, the Department Director. All of our staff did fantastic work to help clean up our roads and our infrastructure after that storm. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
That's great news. I like hearing stuff like that. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County. I have a few issues I would like to share with you this morning. One is on the potential for new war, and this increasing friction points in the world caused me to be very concerned about potential effects of war on the people of Clackamas County. We had a president who said, quote, "I hate war as only a soldier who has lived it can, only as one who has seen its brutality, its futility, and its stupidity." That's a quote from Dwight D. Eisenhower. Also, I'd like to share with you a little bit of history on a very highly decorated United States Marine, Smedley D. Butler, twice awarded the Medal of Honor for heroism. After he retired from some 35 years in the United States Marine Corps, he said that war was a racket, and he was very concerned about the connections between war and big business. This is going on, and I'm very concerned about it today. I'm also very concerned that this nation not spend the kind of money that we spent in Afghanistan and Iraq that was in the trillions, and I'm very concerned that in the future, the sons and daughters of American mothers be sent into harm's way only in real threats to U.S. national security. On the Clackamas County Vector Control, we had a briefing yesterday. I encourage everyone to go to fightthebytes.com and learn what Clackamas County Vector Control is doing and how you can avoid mosquitoes, flies, and other vectors: anthropods, insects, rodents, and such. On the cat tax, the cat tax is the tax that I receive the most complaints from constituents on, is the corporate activity tax. The second most feared potential tax is tolling, and so I encourage people to stay involved, keep communicating with your state representatives. We need to have that corporate activity tax repealed, because right now, the cat tax is repelling potential new business from our county. Nobody wants to come and try to be successful and have to pay that tax. Last week, I spoke at the Clackamas County Drug Court graduation. It was a very positive experience, and I want to thank Judge Steele for her leadership in Drug Court, and also I want to bid good luck to the graduates from Drug Court. I'm very concerned, though, about the number of people in Clackamas County who have said that they are recovering addicts, and it's a huge problem that we need to continue to fight. So please, if you want to learn more about Drug Court, it's a very good program, you can go to county website and read up on that. Also, this year, of course, is a big election year, and I want to, again, encourage everyone to ensure that they are registered, that their address is correct. You can go to the Clerk's website, and there's a link that you can use to make sure that you're registered properly. And encourage everyone in your family to register, please. It's very important. On Measure 110, the fight's not yet over in the legislature. I encourage everybody to keep the pressure on your elected representative. Also, on the Outreach Center that many people have heard about for down in the Abernathy area, some people have questioned the importance of our investment into this, and I'd like to share with you something that makes me support this project. In 2022, the Federal Survey on Addiction and Health did a poll in Oregon, and it found that 12.6% of the people polled had used an illicit drug in the previous 30 days. 12.6% of 4.3 million is 541,000 people. Clackamas County has 10% of the state population, so if that were to equate equally, it would mean that 54,180 people in Clackamas County had used an illicit drug in the previous 30 days. This is a huge problem, and even if Measure 110 is repealed, which I pray that it is, we are going to need the ability to reach out to people in the county, not just people who are homeless and on the street, but people who have jobs, have families, and are still struggling with addiction. This is going to be a long problem that's going to take a lot of time for us to deal with, so that is why I support the Outreach Center project down on Abernathy. This, in the next few days, tonight I have an 82nd Avenue High Capacity Transit meeting, city dinner tonight, Hoodland Fire Award Dinner on Saturday night, and then I'm going to be at the Hoodland CPO on Monday. And also, I'm always amazed that some people in the county are not aware of the threat of tolling. I'm very concerned that it's coming, and the action that every citizen needs to take is to go to votebefortolls.org, download IP4Petition, sign it, have your family sign it, have your neighbors sign it, and send it back in as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, good morning, Clackamas County, and I just want to say, Commissioner Scholl, I share your concern about what's happening around the globe today, because it impacted this county greatly with both the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, because our National Guard was consistently being deployed in those two conflicts, and we had to work very hard in this county with the support of the Guard to make sure that people were getting the reintegration needs met when they came home, because it's one thing to be, and I've never experienced it, so I don't speak from direct experience, but just the experience talking to some of our folks who have served in those conflicts, it was very necessary to give them an opportunity to come back and reintegrate, because you really can't be in a war zone one day and then come back the next day and drive along the freeway, and, you know, just that total adjustment is very difficult for people. So thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate it. A couple of other things. I've been busily visiting with our Economic Development Chambers of Commerce. I've talked to Wilsonville, I've talked to Oregon City, I'll be out to Estacada, I'll be at the Happy Valley piece. One of the things that I've asked our Economic Development folks to do is to get the information about what our business recovery centers did during the pandemic and all the other things that we faced while fires, so on and so forth. I know that our response was a positive response in that we decided we would take, I believe, CARES dollars and ARPA money, I'll check on that, make sure I'm giving out a correct information, to our chambers administered, I think it was from Oregon City Chamber, to give bridge funding to businesses so they could maintain their businesses during a time when we were having closures and so on and so forth. Evidently, it was very successful. Wilsonville in particular, right now, is a real powerhouse of keeping that going and active, and we started it here in Clackamas County, but Wilsonville also works with counties up and down the I-5 corridor. up and down the I-5 corridor. So, once again, something that we've started, and our idea here in Clackamas County, thanks to good staff, has gone bigger than Clackamas County, and I think we ought to have people acknowledge that once in a while, that we have some pretty good ideas here, and we're very, very innovative. So, I want to thank, the coffee I had was this week was with Jonathan Owens of the Oregon City Chamber. I will ask to get this under issues, but they want to talk about the courthouse and what's going on with that. And as far as I know, we haven't really made any decisions in any way, shape, or form. We've done some surface conversations, but I just wanted to let you know, colleagues, that they're, they seem to be really, really wanting to talk with us. Oregon, the Chamber folks and the business community. You've been talking with them, yeah.
Well, I have been getting comments, "What are you doing about the courthouse?"
Yes, that's what I've been getting, too. So, I thought maybe we could talk about that someplace in the near future, just so we give them some certainty of what's happening.
And I do mention to them that the courthouse won't be vacant until August of 2025.
Right. So, that was their other, yeah, that was their other concern there, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, but thank you for that. I had an opportunity to really do something extremely fun. On Sunday, the 18th, I attended the Lunar New Year, the Milwaukee Center, which is part of our North Clackamas Park and Rec. It was absolutely fantastic. They had young children there doing traditional dances. They had music. They had large dragon puppets that they were, you know, really celebrating with. We had all different kinds of food. The place was packed. And I really want to give kudos to the North Clackamas Parks folks who put all this on. It really was just a fun event, and, I mean, I think I stayed close to, you know, two hours there with everybody, and it was particularly nice. So, they've done, kudos to them. They've done a good job. The other thing I wanted to mention yesterday, and once again, Commissioner Shaw, you happened to be around, but I met with the young guy, Merrick Stanton, who designed the new bee logo for, you know, our cars, for our plates, yeah. And he's quite the artist, and of course, he came in to see me because he knew I had some knowledge of bees. I think we scared Caroline a little bit because we started to go into bee jargon and, you know, morphology of insects, and how I was observing speciation in New Brunswick with two different species of bees, dah 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 dah. So, it was exciting for me because my life now with the work I do here was quite different than when I was out as a field biologist, really having fun and being out in nature and studying blueberry pollinators. So, we're going, I'm going to keep in touch with him. I'd like to put him in touch with Water and Environment Services because they are doing quite a bit with NCPRD in West with pollination issues, and he'd like to get involved with that. So, I'm going to try and see if I can't get him mentored into that, but that was fantastic. I want to tell you, I hope the county fair board meeting went well. I couldn't make that one because I had a Lakewood Board Retreat Dinner. I serve on the board of the Lakewood Arts Committee, and it is our theater group and our art education group, and since I am a board member, and I knew that you, I knew you colleagues would cover and talk to our good folks at the Fair Board that I'd be okay. It's the reason we have five, I oftentimes say, so if we do have conflicts, we can depend on each other to, go ahead.
And we did.
Yeah, we did, I know. Okay, that's about all I have. I am going to remind people, the Clackamas County College State of the Colleges, Friday, the 23rd, in the morning, I'll be there, and I hope many of you can go because they are essential for our workforce education progress. I had my first meeting with the, my workforce board appointment from the governor yesterday, and we're going to be looking at the workforce systems holistically, and I will bring specifics about that back. It was my first meeting. And also, I have a whole pile of materials from the National Association again, and you'll be seeing those strewn around the office. I encourage you to read them. I pack them in my suitcase to bring them home.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you.
I wait with bated breath.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Just real quickly to touch on how much I appreciate Commissioner Schrader's knowledge of bees and everything. I had to share with her yesterday that her knowledge of bees was instrumental in helping us get, you know, our shirts home rental Airbnb is across the finish line, so, you know, thank you for that. Pun intended.
That's okay. We have time for that.
We have time today, yeah.
So, I know that we had a recess last week, and I know that it's not uncommon for us to get, even on recesses or vacations, sometimes you get dragged into county work. I'm sure you all got tagged with something, so, but I found this last week to be especially taxing for me with regards to some of the issues that were going on in the county. But I had, it was intense enough, I had one of those moments of reflection. I just thought I was, I never shared this story before, but I'm going to share it now and then kind of get into some acknowledgement of some of the people who help us at the county, our volunteers in particular. But, so, back in, when I was in high school, I was a pretty good debater, and I got pulled into somewhat of a feud, if you want to call it that, and I got pulled into this as the person to lead, be the tip of the spear on this particular thing, this effort. So, I, you know, I went to the meeting, and they were all riled up, and, you know, I was going to be the lead guy on it, and I said, "I really don't understand this. I mean, you guys are propping me up to do all this, and I really don't understand, what's this all about?" Right? And I felt comfortable about really taking the issue and what I was told for granted that it was facts. I didn't really know it was fact, right? And, you know, the process started, and I said, "You know, I'm not well enough informed on this to, you know, tread or to spread or antagonize or to actually just spread information or claim information's true if I really don't know it." So, it was one of those moments, and I was young, I was a teenager, right? I was still in high school. And I had to reflect on that this week when I experienced, once again, in our local politics, where there's local politics, national politics, state politics, that sometimes misinformation gets out there, and people with their hearts and their passion hear the misinformation, and they take it to heart, and they, you know, whether they go, whether it's an attack or it's a phone call, or, you know, they're expressing their concerns about something. It reminds me of that moment, and I've always was very careful. So, 25 years ago, when I first got public service, another thing came up locally. A friend of mine called me, "Oh, this big, huge fight's going on between this water district and this water district." And I got, again, from a public service standpoint, I got pulled in this fight. I said, "Well, wait, wait, wait. Show me these, show me what the agreements are. I really want to understand this before. I don't want to go in the room and just go up there and express the same talking points you have and attack this, you know, this elected official or this particular board if I don't really understand it, right? It's not fair." And so, I really have always had that approach. I've always had the approach of just trying to be, you know, honest and understanding and be very careful about what I say. And, you know, sometimes that meant I sat in a lot of rooms and watched a lot of meetings, and I learned it before I ever said anything. And that's my, that's been my approach in life, and that is to be more understanding, get the facts straight, and so forth. So, you know, it's not uncommon, I just think in the last year, how many, you know, call them upsets or confusion or misinformation or campaigns of misinformation, and actually intentional campaigns where misinformation's being spread, which always bothers me. It really bothers me because I remember how, I remember the pain and the anguish, not only of my own, but that of others who got so emotionally wrapped up into some kind of an effort in their community, and just to be verbally destroyed or abused based on misinformation, and it's just unfair. You know, I won't quote the Bible, but I think none of us remember the terms, "Thou shall not bear false witness," right? Very fundamental principle, and I've lived by that as best I can. And sometimes, maybe, sure, I make an assumption, I read something in the paper, or I hear something, and I, you know, maybe I assume it's true, like a lot of us do. We don't have time to research everything we hear. We just take it for granted, but I don't, but the intention, if you're actually, if it results in actually inflicting harm or attacking someone's character, I really think that it's really important to be, do the research and be mindful that, you know, harm can be done here. And I had a meeting with some volunteer citizens this week, and one of the people in that room was very upset, and I felt really bad because that person was upset on misinformation that literally wasn't true. And I felt the pain. I can empathize with that pain. And so, I just want to just say, no, these things happen. I know sometimes misunderstandings happen, whether they're politically motivated or whether they're a campaign or whether it's just indirect. There's all sorts of scenarios, right? But I just want to just, it reminded me of, we got to value our volunteers. You know, we can't put them through a lot of heartache and emotion. It's not fair if any particular citizen who's volunteering on behalf of their community, city, county, whatever it may be, whatever that may be, for them to lose sleep and be distraught, it's not healthy for anyone to go through all that. And I know that from time to time, we have a lot of committees, we have a lot of CPOs, we do, there's a lot, hundreds of people over the years that have just dedicated their life or their retirement towards helping community. And I think really, that intention of helping community, I think that's embedded in most everyone that I come across. They're well-intended, and it's our job, I guess, to be, to make sure that the information they have is good information. And so, we always need to strive for education, good information, and get the word out on whatever it may be. And sometimes, things happen where we're blindsided. We don't see something coming, we don't realize what's happening, and then we got to be on the defensive and try to get that information out there. So, I just want to say for all of the volunteers out there, including Commissioner Ann Linsor this morning, she's not involved in any of this, of course, I just wanted to say, is that a deep heartfelt thank you and gratitude to all of our volunteers? That's what I have today.
Thank you very much. We do cherish our volunteers, Commissioner Savas. That was very nice. Last night, as was mentioned, we attended the, our annual joint fair board meeting with this commission and the fair board, and I have to say, that fair board is hopping. A couple of years ago, they hired, maybe a year and a half ago, they hired a new executive director, and he has every single weekend booked. He has programs coming online. He's experimenting, he's doing new things. This year, they had the Renaissance Fair in three weekends in a row, and was so successful, they're booking four weekends in a row on the Renaissance Fair, and it's a huge moneymaker. People like to get dressed up in Renaissance garb, and they're experimenting. They had a big Brew Fest for the weekend. It was totally sold out, and all the beer was donated, and they raised about $12,000 to go into their foundation to continue on the multipurpose building that this commission is partially funding through our ARPA monies. But, and it's just wonderful. I mean, they're using social media, they're able to track people from where they come from and what they're interested in, some AI is involved in that, and it was quite an education on how they've really upped their game. They changed the logo of the Clackamas County Fair last year, and this year, they're changing the logo of the Canbee Rodeo to make it more appealing. This last fair, we had in seasonally high temperatures, and attendance was down, but then they made up for the attendance in the last two to three days of the fair, and they actually ended up showing a profit. And Brian says it was amazing. I thought we were just not going to be able to do it, but we did. As a matter of fact, the FFA livestock auction, where the students auction their animals they show, made over $800,000 for the students, and next year, he's hoping that we hit over $1 million for that. And I just think that's really wonderful. Like I say, a lot of good things are happening with the fair, and my hat's off to them. They're doing a fantastic job. They have two brand-new fair board members because, well, one had passed and one had retired, and they're just infused with energy, and it's a very hard-working board. You talk about volunteers, Commissioner Savas, and that was an example last night. There, that's a working board. They do a lot. I'd like to upgrade, update the folks on Measure 110. This week, the Board of County Commissioners approved language for advisory vote to the public on the referral, the repeal, excuse me, of Measure 110 as an advisory vote. In the event that Oregon Legislature does not make a decision, however, it sounds like there's some language coming out of our legislature to reform Measure 110. And counties are being asked, and we all received an email yesterday, it's rather nebulous what they're asking us to do. We're trying to get it figured out, and I mentioned before, we could have a special ops committee or not. I talked to Gina Nichol, the executive director of Association of Oregon Counties. They said they didn't even give us a 24-hour turnaround time to make a decision on this. She is asking that they delay the decision from tomorrow morning so the counties and the commissions have more time to review it as a whole. I don't want to have to make a decision during special ops on this. I've had very long conversations with, many conversations with DA John Wentworth, and then this morning, we also had a joint call with our sheriff, the Wentworth County Administrator and our county council on what we think it's going to be. They want to reclassify misdemeanor as unclassified, and I says, "Please, I need a definition of that before I can sign off." Right? We don't know what it means. There's supposedly money, a grant application process, we can apply for grants. They're supposed to be noncompetitive. I need to know how much pot of money, is there a criteria on this? But remember one thing, according to our AOC president, whom I spoke to this morning, Danielle Duffield, yeah? She said, "The legislature is looking at the performance of two counties in Oregon. Clackamas County and Marion County are the leaders in this effort, and they're trying to model the programs after what we're already doing here." And I find that, find that very interesting. Law enforcement and the district attorneys have been pivotal in this effort at the legislature, and I can't say that enough. If not for the district attorneys, the chiefs of police, and the Sheriff's Association, we would not be where we're at and able to get a possible fix on Measure 110. I look forward to talking to commissioners and the public more about it, but that's all the information I have today. Just want to let you know, there's movement on that, and I look forward to it, and I'll keep the commissioners surprised. Very long, very long nights dealing with this, as we know. Well, that's all I have.
Chair Smith, I have one more thing.
Sure.
I often speak about the importance of residents of the county to take action, pick a issue in government and get involved. Well, last week, 1,270 people testified against a statewide property tax, HJR 201. That was a great turnout.
That's right.
And they had a fantastic effect on putting the kibosh on the idea for a statewide property tax. For all of you in Clackamas County who testified against HJR 2001, thank you very much.
Good information, Commissioner Shaw. That was amazing. I saw that. Yep. I can't really, I was quite worried about that since we've worked so hard in Clackamas County to keep our property taxes low and not raise taxes. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.